Welcome to the Tuesday, July 18th, 2017, School Committee Meeting. I'd like to first call a roll call.
Mr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. DuVall?
Here.
Mr. Lozlo? Dr. Page?
Present.
Ms. Pellican?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Tomo?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
Thank you. Please join the School Committee in the Pledge of Allegiance. First item on the agenda is the election of officers, and we will start with the Chairman. We have four offices to appoint this evening. There's the Chair, there's the Vice Chair, there's the Secretary, and then the Recording Secretary, and so we'll go in that order. I'd like to entertain motions for nominations for Chairman, or Chairperson.
I'll nominate Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Any other nominations for Chair? Okay, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Pellican?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Tomo?
Yes.
Six yes.
Thank you. We'll now entertain motions for Vice Chair. I'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate, go ahead, go ahead. I'd like to nominate Mr. Page for Vice Chair.
Second.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Ryan for Vice Chair.
Second.
Okay, so we have two, any additional nominations for Vice Chair? Okay, so we have myself and Ms. Ryan for Vice Chair. So I guess we'll go with the first nomination first, Max, and do a roll call vote.
You want a roll call, then we'll just call the name of the one you like.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I'll call the roll call and you choose the name. Ms. DuVall?
Ryan.
Dr. Page?
Page.
Ms. Pellican?
Ryan.
Ms. Ryan?
Ryan.
Mr. Tomo?
Mr. Page.
Mr. Bishop?
Dr. Page.
Three for Dr. Page and three for Ms. Ryan.
Okay, so we don't, at this stage, we don't, we do not have a Vice Chair, so what, if anybody wishes to change their nomination or change their mind, we could potentially proceed that way with another vote, or we'll have to wait till the next meeting and try and establish the Vice Chair when we have a full core, a full representation of the Committee at the table, so. Okay, so the next position is the Secretary, and this is normally the receiver, or normally would be the Superintendent, was the official Secretary, the keeper of the record for the School Committee, and so I will make the nomination for the receiver for that, so we can go through this formality.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Ms. Pellican?
Yes.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Tomo?
Yes.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. DuVall?
Yes.
Six yes.
Okay, thank you. And the next nomination is for Recording Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Max Golicson.
Second.
Any other nominations for Recording Secretary? Okay, seeing none, can we get a roll call on that one, please?
Ms. Pellican?
Mr. Golicson.
Ms. Ryan?
Mr. Golicson.
Mr. Tomo?
Mr. Golicson.
Mr. Bishop?
Mr. Golicson.
Ms. DuVall?
Mr. Golicson.
Dr. Page?
Mr. Golicson.
Six for Mr. Bishop.
Congratulations, Max.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure for you to be serving us for another year.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is setting the day and time of the regular meetings. First item is the day of the School Committee meeting. It has been Tuesdays traditionally, once every two weeks, but we've decided now we're just going to meet once a month, so it would be Tuesdays unless anybody has, wants to propose a different day over the week.
Just a quick question, does the Tuesdays work for the, for you?
Did you?
Does?
Yes.
Okay.
And my question would be, does it have to just be once a month? Could it be more?
Could it be more often?
Yeah, well, I would prefer the ones every two weeks.
That's actually, that's actually, at this point in time and under receivership, that's at the purview of the, of the receiver as to how often we have to meet.
I guess that's up to him.
Yeah.
Sure. So for right now, keep it at once a month, and there are more agenda items that we could use at that time.
Okay, so do we, can we just get a show of hand? Actually, I think we need to do all of these by roll call, or Max, can we do a show of hands on Tuesday?
Yeah, you can, and the rest of them can.
Okay.
I think you can, so. You have a motion and a second?
Yeah, so, okay, so I would entertain a motion.
How many?
The motion is to hold the meetings on Tuesday, once a month. Second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded, show of hands? All in favor? Meetings will be on Tuesdays. In the time of commencement of the meeting, again, traditionally, it's been seven o'clock. Does anybody wish to change that time or propose, propose a new time, or make a motion to keep it at seven?
I'll make a motion to keep it at seven.
Second.
Okay, motioned and seconded, keep the meetings at 7:00 PM for commencement. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so meetings will be at 7:00 o'clock PM. Next agenda item is the acceptance of the Rules of Order for the Committee, and we will be following Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised. Do I have a motion to accept that as our?
So moved.
Second.
Motioned and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Next item?
I'll move to adjourn.
Entertain, we have motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, motion and seconded, all in favor? Thank you. We call the reorganization meeting concluded at 7:07 PM. Okay, so, we probably don't, I'm going to wave it. Okay, does any, all right, so the time that the next meeting was scheduled to commence was at 7:15 or immediately following the reorganization meeting? Does anybody need a minute or two to do anything, or do you want to step right into the?
I think we should go ahead.
Okay, go forward. All right, so, okay, we will do a roll call, and actually, Mr. Bishop, it is now your meeting.
Oh, wonderful. This is the one, where are you going? Oh, great. Let me find that. Good evening, we're going to call the Tuesday, July 18th, regular School Committee meeting to order. Mr. Golicson, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bishop?
Present.
Ms. DuVall?
Present.
Mr. Lozlo?
Dr. Page? Present.
Ms. Pellican?
Present.
Ms. Ryan?
Present.
Mr. Tomo?
Present.
Six present, one absent.
I think we're going to waive the welcome, the Pledge of Allegiance, we just did it 10 minutes ago, so I make a motion, I can't make a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor, waiving the pledge, thank you. Public input, is there anyone in the audience this evening that would like to address the School Committee? Please feel free to come to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody wish to speak to the people sitting here this evening? If not, thank you. Discussion in a minute, item four, May 2nd meeting, any corrections, deletions, omissions? If not, I don't believe we approve these, right?
No, just the discussion.
Just the discussion, okay. Obviously, there are a lot of changes under the receivership, things that we normally would have done as a regular School Committee, we're no longer capable or able to do under the law. Okay, does anybody have anything they'd like to address on the May 2nd one? Okay, next item, June 12th, were there any corrections, deletions, additions we'd like to add to the June 12th meeting? If not, I guess we can, we'll follow. Item five, new business. Dr. Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. So in order, so that you have quite a few things to review with the Committee tonight, and so I thought it'd be helpful for you all to see what I had prepared in writing, and to be able to digest it hopefully as I'm presenting it, ask questions, and then obviously, we can follow up outside of this meeting as necessary as well. So just to begin with, I want to just restate where we currently are, that I am, I remain as interim receiver. The current receiver is on leave, and until that situation, until that is resolved or changes, this is the present situation, and we are planning, going forward, given those conditions. So just beginning with some general announcements, and then getting into staffing, budget, and curriculum and instruction updates. So first, I would just like to congratulate Dr. Page and Mr. Tomo on their reelection to the School Committee, and congratulations and welcome to Ms. Ryan, the newest member of the Southbridge School Committee. Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Margot Farrick, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services. I'm really pleased that Margot is with us in the district and with us tonight, and I'd like to actually turn it over to Margot to give a few welcoming words to the Committee, and to let them know a little bit more about her work.
Is it on? Yeah. So first, I really want to thank you for the opportunity, and I genuinely feel it's a privilege to do this work in Southbridge. I spent 20 years in my last district, which pretty much is my entire career up until now. It took a really special opportunity for me to be able to leave my district and what I was building and growing there, and I really, I said, it's a privilege to be here, so I want to thank you for, all of you for the opportunity and the trust that you have in me for helping build an amazing district for the kids and families of Southbridge. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farrick. So a quick update on our dual-language program. As you know, that's a new program coming to Eastford Road this year, and so we have two kindergarten and two first-grade teachers, I'm sorry, classrooms with full student enrollment. So this is an optional program, families have to choose to come to it, and I'm very pleased that we are full on enrollment already, and I think that speaks to the need for a program like this, the desire in the community for a program like this, and what an asset it can be to our district. And we have hired both Spanish and English-speaking teachers, and that's no, no mean feat to hire teachers who can be skillful at providing this type of instruction for our students. I've met both of the Spanish-speaking teachers and the English-speaking teachers, and I'm really pleased that they'll be doing this work. I think they're going to make a great team, and a very intensive curriculum development will take place over the next few weeks. I think as you also know, we're moving the first-grade classrooms from across the district to Eastford Road. That transition has gone smoothly, and all classrooms are in place. I want to sincerely thank Mr. Mycomo and his staff for coordinating the move of the classrooms from both Charleston, Charlton and West Street Schools to Eastford Road. Summer school is underway and taking place at West Street School, Eastford Road School, and the middle school, and additionally, we are in our fourth week of our summer meals program. So far, we have served 3,100 lunches and 2,050 breakfasts at eight sites. The district was awarded a $2 million competitive school redesign grant for the middle school and for the high school. The funding is designed to support three key elements of the district's turnaround plan. Those are, one, strengthening the district's turnaround leaders, two, strengthening instruction, and three, redesigning secondary education. I want to thank the teachers, school leaders, students, community members, and higher education partners who worked this, this spring to develop the grant proposal. Next, I also want to thank the Southbridge-based company, SJC Custom Drums, for their support of our music program. Mike Cipari and his team have donated nearly $25,000 in time, materials, and equipment. I want to thank our high school music director, Dr. Arthur Temvas, ah.
Temasian.
Temasian, thank you, for coordinating the support. And I had a chance to speak with him on the phone yesterday, and I think he has a great plan for, for music at the high school. The new school year begins Tuesday, August 22nd, for teachers, Monday, August 28th, for students in grades one through 12, and Thursday, August 31st, for kindergarten. School hours have been expanded, and the calendar includes additional time for teacher professional development, and I've attached the school calendar for your review. Now moving to staffing updates. Our new Director of Multicultural Education, Michael Gary, Michael reports to Ms. Farrick, began July 1st. He oversees what we formerly called ELL responsibilities, and like I said, he's part of Ms. Farrick's team. Really pleased to have him with us. We had a district leadership team meeting today, and it was great to have his input on the type of direction that he intends to continue for our English learners in the district. For the position of Director of Special Education, Ms. Farrick is conducting final interviews this week, and we, we plan to have a new Special Ed Director in place in early August. Job offers have been extended to a new Assistant Principal at the middle school, and interviews are underway for Assistant Principals at Charlton Street and Eastford Road School. A candidate has been identified as the new Dean of Students at West Street School, and interviews are being held for Dean of Students at Charlton Street School. Principals are actively recruiting and interviewing for vacant teaching positions. I am, I've reinstated the policy of all new candidates having to meet with me before they're hired, so I have a chance to welcome them to the district and discuss their, their salary, and all new, all newly hired staff will participate in a three-day orientation in August. We're very excited about that. Finance updates. Finance Director Dan Didi resigned effective June 30th. The town has been very helpful with year-end budget reconciliation, and a thank you goes out to Ron Sanangelo and Karen Harnoyes for their partnership. We recently worked with the town to release a lead partner request for proposal for an outside organization to assume responsibility for day-to-day operations of the business office. Bids were due last Friday, and we received three. The review process started today, and Karen Harnoyes, the Town Accountant, is on our review team. Next, summer curriculum work. At the elementary level, you might be aware that Beth Champney has assumed the role of Elementary Curriculum Coordinator, very excited and very enthusiastic about the work that she is doing. So under her leadership and with the partnership and fellow leadership from the elementary principals, we have an elementary ELA curriculum writing team, and they are working to update the kindergarten to grade five English Language Arts curriculum maps, and all grades are represented, and the teams are meeting weekly over the summer. This is really in an effort to make sure that our teachers are guiding the work and helping to determine what type of curriculum we will have for our students as we move forward, making sure those plans are squarely in place. Want to make sure we have just really solid, a solid understanding of what it takes to effectively teach our children literacy skills in the district as we start the new year, and there's a lot of enthusiasm for this work. An elementary reading team begins its meetings this week to review reading intervention programs and choose the program that will best meet the needs of our students in grades K to five. Finally, our elementary math teachers begin meeting later this month to revise and complete their curriculum maps and assessments. The team will also design specific lessons and suggest best practices to improve daily math instruction. At the middle and high school levels, our curriculum coordinators are Dan Wally and Adam Couturier, and they are working with middle school and high school teachers under the guidance of both our principals at the middle and high school levels on several curriculum projects. First, they're developing some curriculum writing sessions in English Language Arts that conducted in late June, and again this week, designed to continue the work of comprehensively building curriculum for English Language Arts. I had the chance today to meet with both Adam and Dan, and Rebecca, and Dr. Townsend, to look more deeply at those maps, and I'm very encouraged by what I see. I think that again, we want to make sure that our teachers, as they work in the district, really know what are the expectations for what we want to teach, and they've had, they've developed these plans collaboratively, and they will really benefit our students as we move forward, so there's no ambiguity about what's meant to be taught in our schools. In addition, our math and special education educators will be taking part in a session on differentiating instruction that will be offered through Pittsburgh State University in order to better utilize and adopt the Engage New York curriculum at the middle school level. And then finally, science teachers are revamping pacing guides in order to ensure that they're hitting all standards required by the state in the subject area of science. Next month, I look forward to coming back to you with a further update on charter school tuitions, and then really looking ahead to the activities that will kick off our new school year. Again, meeting with the principals and other administrators right now to help determine how we will best use teachers' time and students' time as we begin the new school year. So I hope that this was sort of a comprehensive overview of the things that are going on right now in the district. Really appreciate the, the work that's being done, and enthusiasm that people are bringing to that work, and certainly welcome any questions you have about what I presented tonight.
Are there any questions for the receiver?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dr. Bishop.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to the, to Dr. Johnston. I don't recall you mentioning the grant that we were awarded recently for the Secondary Education Redesign Program. I think that's about a $2 million grant.
Absolutely.
So this would be a good opportunity, I think, to inform the public of, of us receiving that.
Absolutely. If you actually look on the front sheet, it's about the six, pull it down, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Oh, you already mentioned it?
It was, yeah.
Oh, sorry, I missed it.
Right, no, I'm, but I appreciate the, the extra plug on that, and.
That's a lot of money.
Definitely excited about it.
I was looking for it under curriculum.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Are there any other questions?
I have a very specific question. So I understand, and as you pointed out tonight, that Ms. Harnoyes handled a lot of the financial parts of the budget and the transition going forward once Mr. Didi left. That's correct?
No, I just appreciate their, their support in that process, but the School Department has definitely been doing the work, but the town has been phenomenal.
Okay, because, okay, because I just want to clarify that, because we did just have that audit come through in which we, one of the biggest criticisms we got as a school district was we relied too much on the town finance department instead of our own finance department.
Sure.
So I just wanted to make sure that was clarified, that it was still done by the School Department, and the majority of the work was handled by the School Department, and it wasn't.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Tomo? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you go back to the summer meals program?
Yes.
In the past, from what I understand it, that was mostly funded or partially funded by a federal grant.
Correct.
And it was brought to my attention that this year, for whatever reason, the grant, the person or persons in charge did not apply for that grant. Do you know why? And whose responsibility is it or was?
Sure, so I have not heard.
And I understand, maybe you don't know, but this is what, it was brought to my attention by a number of constituents.
Absolutely, absolutely, and an understandable question or concern. I have not heard that to date, and so if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to check on that and get back to you with the information.
Oh, no, no, that's, that's no problem. It was just brought to my attention, and, you know, it's not a million-dollar grant, but $12,000, $13,000 has to have been taken out of a school budget now to pay for the summer feeding program, where in the past had been federally funded.
Okay, let me find out.
The second one, being the fact that we've had a lot of upper-level managers come and go. Are we in the process by the state, or should we be, or should we have an audit, an independent audit of our finances?
So since the time that I've been on the ground here, since the beginning of June, I've actually had one of our auditors here with us.
Okay, so you're right on that.
If you came, yeah, if he was here today, he's been here basically between three and five days a week from, for June and July, just making sure that we close out fiscal year '17 accurately and effectively, and then as we open the books for fiscal year '18, that we're on top of that as well.
Because it wouldn't be fair to four new people coming in.
Correct.
At the management level, like her, if something is not.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
So I'm glad you're on it. And the last thing I'd like to say is, is I've heard a lot of positive things about you. I've dealt with you in a, in a short period of time. Is there any possible way that you could stay for the school year?
Sure, so I, I very much appreciate that, and I'm truly flattered and humbled. It is, as Ms. Farrick said, it's a real pleasure to be here every day. It's something that I look forward to, I look forward to being here every day, but right now, I restate the position that I'm interim, and until we have further resolution, that it just has to continue to be my mantra.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Am I to understand, we are going to sub out kind of the, the business operations for the district? Is that what I'm understanding? We're not going to hire somebody, we're going to hire a firm?
Correct, and then if it would be helpful, I could describe a little bit more about our thought process on that.
Okay.
So the, the operations of the School Department need to continue to improve. We know that's part of the turnaround plan, and priority area five within the turnaround plan really speaks to that.
Right.
So we did, you know, initially, a look at what needed to be done, and that's why Priority Area Five exists, and it's my contention that continuing to try to find an individual who can solely do that, if we try to hire off the street and find that person, we won't be moving quickly enough to fix those systems and get them right once and for all, and so our goal with this, this RFP that we put out was to find a vetted organization that could truly come in and fix the, and improve the operations of the School Department to the point where they could be sustainable for the long haul, and it wouldn't rest on an individual's skill set to get that job done, that we could bring in the.
And these three people we're looking at have definite expertise in the field of education?
We have a, we, the bottom line is yes, absolutely. They've been pre-vetted for their work in education, yes.
One follow-up. If something is found out, negative, whatever, will it be brought forth to this committee and to the taxpayers of Southbridge if there's some, something is wrong, shall I say?
Sure, so I'm not, I'm just trying to think of what might, some examples of.
Money that should be there is not there.
Okay.
To be very blunt.
Okay.
In any department.
Right, 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 right.
I'll try to be diplomatic about it. You know what I'm talking about.
Sure, so the, any relevant information that we can and should bring forward, we'd be glad to do so. We, the finances are, you know.
Sure.
Transparent, and so we would want to make sure that.
Yeah.
The School Committee knows what they need to know.
Okay, thank you. Are we allowed to ask you other questions? I would like to ask you about something in the turnaround plan itself.
Sure, so I know that in the past, we've said, you know, if it's on the agenda, let's talk about it, if it's not, then maybe it has to wait for the next month, but I'd be glad to hear the question.
Well, I was, I was, do you have a copy of the turnaround plan? I'm sure you've probably downloaded it. I have one, I have one. Do you have one? I just want to make sure everybody on the Committee has a turnaround plan, because that's what's driving this bus right now, is our turnaround plan. And I was looking at it, and I noticed that the elementary and middle schools are slated to go from 990 hours of instruction to 1330 this year. Is that in fact taking place?
It is not fully taking place, we're taking steps towards it, so I actually think this is a good idea, that we are more, we're growing towards, a more expanded school day, growing towards 1,330 hours, but at the elementary level, for example, that would require a seven-and-a-half-hour school day. I do believe, and forgive me because I'm not prepared with the exact numbers.
I just, I just, that just caught my eye today, and I said, you know, if we are in fact going to add 35% more instruction, that means 35% more instructionalers, educators, where is that, that's a sizable.
Right.
Budget hit.
Right.
I was wondering what, what plan had been put in place to, to come up with that kind of money, because that's, you know, as you know, salaries are most of our budget, so I just was wondering if we had a plan in place where that money was going to come from.
Sure, sure, so the, we are expanding the school day for next year. The current budget does cover those, the additional hours that are being added for next year, and if it would, if it would be helpful, I'd be glad to come back next month with an exact overview of the number of hours that will be added for next year, but if you look on the calendar, you can see that at the, at the very bottom, the school hours for students is included, and so next year, it's a six-and-three-quarter-hour day for so next year, it's a six-and-three-quarter-hour day for our elementary students, and a seven-hour day for our middle school students, and less for our high school students. And so those hours are already expanded.
Yeah, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
No, that's all.
I just... That's a sizable budgetary item, and I had genuine concerns that
Sure.
that we had planned for this.
Right, right.
Well, I hope we would. And also in budget, I emailed you over the...
Yes.
I don't know when I emailed you. It was one night last week.
Right.
As you know, I've been a hawk on... I want to know how much we spent on unemployment last fiscal year, as well as how much we spent on legal fees. Those have been two expenses that have just been out of control for the last five years.
Sure. So, and I appreciate having the information so I could come prepared. So in terms of the unemployment for fiscal year 17, the amount so far is $450,000 for fiscal year 17. Legal fees are $124,000 for fiscal year 17.
Well, I think we're all in agreement, we could have done better things with that money, but it is what it is, I guess. Okay.
If you wouldn't... And I think it might be helpful, information that I've brought tonight, if you'd like to hear the comparison to years past.
I think it's higher on unemployment, to be honest with you.
No question.
Considerably.
Right.
So...
The year before had been 114, 585. Legal fees in the past have been as high as 237 in fiscal year 15, $91,000 in fiscal year 16, $124,000 this year.
Right. Yeah, last year, we really did cut back on legal and unemployment, and it blew up this year, so...
One last question regarding the turnaround plan. Is that set in stone, or can that be changed? If one of us, or a couple of us, come up with a new idea, or an idea or a plan, and you think it's good, do you have the authority to make it part of the turnaround plan?
So, it's a great question. The turnaround plan is devised by, or is the responsibility of the commissioner and the receiver. So any changes to the turnaround plan, which would come through an amendment, would have to be at the agreement of the commissioner and the receiver, and the commissioner would ultimately sanction it by...
Through you, like? Would you be part of the chain?
Yes.
Okay.
Presently, as interim receiver, working with the acting commissioner right now, we would be able to make those sorts of changes. And if you look at the other turnaround plans that exist for Level 5 schools or for districts, you would find that there have been amendments a long way.
I mean, the Constitution could be amended. Why not a turnaround plan? So, okay.
Do we have any other questions for Dr. Johnston? If not, we'll move on to next item B. Next scheduled meeting, Tuesday, August 15th. Would we like to...
I'd just like to say I'm going to be out of town, but I have no objection to the meeting happening in my absence.
All in favor? I guess. I guess we... Do you start that, or do we?
I do.
Okay, well, that'll be it, then. Okay, we're gonna move on to item six. Members for them. Does any member have anything they'd like to share? Dr. Page?
Yeah, first, I would also like to welcome the fellow colleagues now, Mr. Thomo and Ms. Ryan. Congratulations on being elected, and I'm fortunate to have been elected with you, and I'm looking forward to our time together to hopefully improve the educational experience of the students of Southbridge. And one other item, I would like to wish Mr. Bishop a happy birthday today. I'm not gonna tell anybody how old he is, but...
Well, sixty-four. Old enough to collect on a social security...
Happy birthday, Mr. Bishop. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Page.
Welcome to the club.
Ms. Ryan?
Thank you. I would also like to extend my congratulations to Mr. Thomo and Mr. Page on the reelections, and thank the community at large for electing me to this position. I look forward to the next three years and fighting for Southbridge families, and I'd also like to thank Ms. Shay for running. I think this was a great field of candidates. I think we really talked about some really important issues happening in the district, and... Am I not loud enough?
You gotta talk into the microphone.
I thought I was talking to the microphone. My apologies. So, yeah, no, I appreciate all of the... All of that that's happened, and I just... I look forward to the next three years.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? I have a few things. Am I allowed to say something?
Yes.
Thank you. First of all, I want to welcome you to the board, and I want to thank Dr. Page and Mr. Thomo for campaigning. I also want to thank Mrs. Shay. She had an unsuccessful bid, but I've worked with Mrs. Martina for many years in the middle school, and I'm always delighted to see that she stays involved with the education of our kids. That's great. I want to take a moment to thank Dan Deedy. He was our business manager, and I've been around many, many business managers, and he was definitely one of the top that I had the pleasure of serving with and working with. When I needed answers, he had them for me very quickly, and I appreciate that. I don't know where he went. I wish him the very best and thank him publicly. I'm sure some of you saw it today in the telegram, and some didn't. As you know, we're struggling here with some issues going on with personnel matters. Telegram did a, what I consider to be a pretty accurate, lengthy editorial on the state of our school system. I think the final sentence said it all, and I think Mr. Thomo was trying to allude to that earlier, that transparency is what we really desperately need at this point in this process. When the Dr. Heisinger went on paid leave, I was inquisitive. I filed a Freedom of Information Act request with the district, and I can say that the district attorney, not the district attorney, our school district's law firm responded to me very quickly and very efficiently. It wasn't a big boxes of paper. It came on a thumb drive like I would expect in the 21st century. For me to say I'm not seriously alarmed with what I read would be an understatement. I'm very distressed. I'm gonna be talking with Dr. Johnston. I'm gonna be talking with Chairman of Town Council. Mr. Thomo brought up a point about the books. Who's auditing our books? The state is running the schools. Should the state be auditing our books? I think that's something we're gonna have to come to terms with. I know we have no power, but we are elected to oversee the taxpayers' dollars, and I don't like what I saw. I'll be quite candid with you. I have also refiled yesterday a request from Karen Harnoys' office for similar documents on expenditures that I saw that I would like definite explanations to. We may be powerless, but we are not ignorant. I live in this town, as do all the folks sitting here. We pay taxes. We hope and pray that our taxes are spent where they should be, and again, I don't want to berate this point right now. I'm sure resolution has to come soon, I hope, sooner than later, and I hope it'll come with transparency. With that, that's all I have this evening. Would somebody like to adjourn this evening's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you.